Okay, um, we have a, Scott Stevens called to say that he was going to be late.
I don't think he's going to be late.
I don't think so either. Coming in from Harrisburg now.
Okay.
Well, we're not told until it's...
Okay, you over here.
Yeah, okay. So, if we get back to the case. Okay, um, the first order of business is to approve the supervisors' meeting notes of October seventeen and October, September seventeen and October two. Do I have a motion?
So, move, Mitch.
And I will second them. And I'll go with the favor.
Aye.
Um, Tim Lumbrich is here, and he would like to make a presentation on the three audits of 2009 and 2010 of the township. Then, Laura, yours.
As a precursor to the 2009 and 2010 audits, I was also asked to take a look at the open space funds and the sewer fund as part of that process of redoing the '09 and '10. And so, I think I'll start with that. I just wanted to open with, we'll do the open space. I believe there are copies have been passed around, so we'll do the open space. I was handed a document last time I was here, open space funding, highly inaccurate, it should not be used. I started using it as a basis for my report, but found there were things missing, inaccurate, just not really worth going into. It has something about a $6 million fund that was set up, and there's just no basis in fact for that. We went back through minutes of meetings. There was never an official resolution to set up an open space fund from the very beginning. So, we'll put that to rest at this point in time. Sorry, I can all send those. And so, we'll start with, at the top, I broke it down between inception, okay, from the day that this all came about, when someone's first said, "Let's start doing some open space projects." They were basically done on a fund as, funded as done basis. So, the minutes would reflect, "We're going to do this project, we're going to fund it through the general fund, and, you know, we're going to go ahead and do this." So, the top half gives you from inception through '05, all right? Once we get to '05, that was when the earned income tax was officially set aside to start the open space funding for other projects. So, I broke it between inception to '05, being that was funded as each project came up through the general fund, and then from January 1 of '06 technically, through December 31 of 2011, which was my latest audit. We'll cover the top half first. Income was principally, there was loan, a loan taken out, and there was some kind of a settlement with Victoria Gardens. I don't remember the history on that, but, anyway, that was the major revenue at that point in time. Again, there was no set aside taxes, there was no set aside funding. If we can take questions at the end, let's do it that way. Expenses, you can see cost of properties, there was debt service interest, in other words, on that debt that was, the loan that was taken out. And then there were land trust expenses incurred back in those days. So, as we look at the period inception to '05, basically, the general fund funded 2.2 million of the open space funding, okay? As we look down below from January 1 of '06 to December of 2011, again, now the earned income tax you'll see comes in as a source of funds to an official open space fund. There were some land proceeds from sales of land, some interest income, again, some more Victoria Gardens. The net fee in lieu, which we actually ended up getting a legal opinion on that, it should reside in the open space funding. That was the one plus that came out of this report. It did bring up the fact of what happens to the fee in lieu, so we'll give whoever this was a little credit on that one. So, that's where we'll see, there is money on developers when they get, they are charged a fee, and then most of the money on the fee in lieu is spent on the Anton Nixon Park, and what is the other one?
Kennedy Park and Rec.
Right. So, we got a legal opinion on that, and apparently, open space does apply to recreation as well. So, I just netted it down into, that's what was coming through as net income. We go to the expenses, there were some more properties purchased, I should say, you know, whether it's rights or whether it's actual properties, I don't recall. Again, some more land trust expenses, and then your debt service. The debt was paid off during this time period. So, technically, from the beginning of the fund to end of December of '11, there's been a loss of about 1.4 million on this fund. Down below, I did a little bit of a reconciliation, meaning the general fund really has come up with about 3.3 million out of its funding. The fee in lieu you'll see is exactly the net income of fee in lieu, so we're leaving that in as a balance. And then, open space, actually, as the earned income tax comes in, has not spent a lot of money out of it to buy the, or cost of property. So, it actually still has a balance in there of 1.7 million. So, that gives you a little reconciliation of how much has come from the general fund and how much still is available for other projects. Okay, I think we'll take your questions.
I was just wondering, and I, Michael Ellen probably remembers better than I, but wasn't that the fee in lieu settlement with Victoria Gardens, because they had no, the developers had no land to commit to open space?
Um, essentially, that's right, yes.
So, shouldn't the Victoria Garden settlement be labeled fee in lieu?
Uh, it could, yeah.
I don't know if it was as simple as it's all fee in lieu.
Yeah, I think it was mixed for two different fees. First, they agreed to give a lump sum of money, and then they gave payments for fee in lieu.
Through many years, I remember.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So, that's why Tim just labeled it, so it would all show the entire amount we received from Victoria Gardens. I mean, we could, you know, we could figure out the portion of what is fee in lieu. It's all the remaining in the open space fund.
Yes, technically, it's all going to be here anyway. So, whether we say it's 185 from fee in lieu, or whether we say it's, I think 690 was total on the Victoria Gardens, we could increase it, but it would still end up in the same fund. That was what was...
The fee, the fee in lieu is in a separate bank account now. Well, it will be tonight once the supervisor's office has to transfer out of the general fund, because it needs to be designated for open space, but I can't put it in with the open space tax.
Okay. But there was no other suit back in the early days?
Oh, no, no. This was just their develop, this was just when they signed the plan, this was the agreement the supervisors made with them.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry, I was trying to look back and see, the actual agreement is back in here, so I did make a copy of that, and it's a mixture, a fee in lieu of 178,000 out of the 690, sewer connection fees, so much per unit, and traffic signals, so...
Traffic signals?
It was a mixture of 25,000 within one year of final plan.
There are no traffic signals there.
What else?
No, they had to pay towards that traffic signal.
The car line?
Yes.
Okay.
So, it was, it was, anyway.
Do you have a question?
Uh, yeah, Tim. In 2005, when the ordinance with the earned income tax, there was also a real estate tax of, I believe, 210, is that correct? For open space, dedicated to that. Later, it was found out in 2010 that, that wasn't legal, so they stopped, he stopped collecting that, but it was represented to the taxpayers as open space money, which we paid. Could you tell me where, if that's in year, or where it was made?
That's all, that was all, that was all deposited in the open space account, the earned income portion and the real estate portion.
Or combined?
Yeah, I believe it was only the first year ago. I thought it was discovered fairly quickly.
I think it was four years.
But it's all in the open space, it was all deposited in the open space fund.
So, that would be under earned income tax?
Yes.
The 3.9 million?
Yes.
We can go back and check, check that. I think it was earmarked as earned income tax, so back in those records. So, I'll go back and check that.
Thank you.
Yeah, we can easily pull out the first time of year-end deposits that they gave away.
So, then it wasn't commingled into the general fund?
Yes.
Separated out with the earned income tax?
Right.
Question?
Yes, Richard Dodd, Chester County Press. Broken it down, write it to two sections, first being inception to December 31, 2005. Could you give me a date as to when that inception date was? Yes. You got me now off the top.
1994.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Okay. Moving. I think the accounting, just to get back to that, I have a 1998, so somewhere, probably many years.
So, Stan?
Yeah?
Just to be clear then, we have a deficit of 1,400,000 and change, and a positive of 1,700,000. So, then we would have approximately, what's that, 300,000, 308,000 to the good?
No.
I'm just pointing out that the general fund actually had to come up with about 3.3 million in order to get everything done in the open space funding.
And so, what the supervisors, all three of them, agreed to do is to transfer the 1.4 back to the general fund from the open space fund to repay the general fund. And then, at the, right after they do that, they agreed to transfer the same amount back to the open space fund, allocating that money for open space.
So, then we'll have how much in the open space after this?
Should start with 1,700,000.
Pardon my ignorance here.
It'll still be back at 1.7 at the end of 2011.
Okay. And that 14, uh, 1,400,000 will make it whole?
Right.
Thank you.
Because we're not allowed to go back prior to 2005, or 2010.
Yes.
On the debt service, we took a loan out, and you are?
George Platts, the county clerk. We took out a loan for 2.5 million, we paid off about 3 million, so the debt service was about 500 million, over, 500,000 over the loan proceeds, original amount. Were there other loans tied to that, or did we have to pay 500,000 just in interest over that period of time? Seems that way. 2.5 million of the loan, there was 352 debt service. That's about 25% over that period of time? And then, the 2.6 down below includes interest also, so, you know, there's another 100 there. Yeah.
And there weren't any other loans on?
No.
That's a loan.
All right, we can go over then to sewer funding. You should have a page on that also. What I was only able to do, I guess, is go back to 2000. That was the oldest records we had on a financial statement basis to separate out the sewer funding. So, basically, what we have is, I think the key is, in 12 years, there has always been at least a net income of 1 million, which is about 87,000 a year. And in that time, if there was major projects that had to come up that couldn't be funded through the sewer fund, the general fund had to come up with those monies. The, I think there's about eight different stations somewhere around the township that had come up. We got to 1,354 as being capital cost paid from the general fund. Somewhere in that same time period, not included in the expenses above, is, they paid for EDUs for sewer jobs. And they're marketable, so they can sell them for about, what, $7,000 each? But, we didn't want to hit them as far as expense, you know, regular expenses, so we separated those out as almost an inventory type item. We'll show those on the balance sheet as time goes forward. So, those are just two special items that should, can be addressed, let's put it that way. I think, again, the supervisors may want to pay back the general fund, and as time goes forward, I believe there may be a policy that, you know, capital items can be borrowed from the general fund as opposed to simply paying for them through the general fund. And again, EDUs will be, will be used and sold as needed. Is there something coming up soon, or?
Yes, next year, there's 100, about 150,000, that would be sold, at 7,000 each.
So, there'll be funding for capital items coming up?
And just so you know, the supervisors did agree, if you notice, there's a 318,000 that is owed back to the general fund from the sewer fund as a result of this. So, they've agreed to make a loan of that to the sewer fund, and the sewer fund's going to be paying it back. And all expenses for sewer are now paid out of the sewer fund, and as Tim said, if needed, loan from the general fund.
Question?
Is it, then, all expenses mean that if a sewer district requires a huge capital expense, that the sewer fund, that will be booked to the sewer fund, and maybe if there's the need for a loan or something like that, then there's going to be an arms-like transaction with the general fund?
Sure.
Okay.
Question?
Uh, yes, the, the, the cost of EDUs in this balance is 1,200 each, and you just mentioned that it's gone up to 7,000 now?
Well, the reason this was 1,200 each, there was a mushroom company that went out of business that owned 372 EDUs. And if we didn't buy them back, they would just be gone, and we wouldn't have allocation. So, the supervisors negotiated with the mushroom farm, because they bought them 40 years ago. So, it's hard to determine exactly how much they were. So, the township bought them back for 1,200 dollars each, and we, our cost for somebody to connect with 7,000 dollars per connection.
Is that cost by ordinance?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
And that's a good point.
That the fee, that doesn't include us actually making the connection?
No.
That's just...
It's just the traffic thing.
For that.
So, Limestone Ridge has 112 units, and probably the street has 36 next year.
Tim, Bill Shelton, this is on a cash basis, and I'm wondering if you have significant receivables, or have there been write-offs, or people who don't pay, you know, their bill or something of that nature?
I did not study that. I don't believe that they get cut off, I think, is the answer to that, so do you have any feel for?
We let somebody go, if they don't pay by the second quarter, we take them to court. And we can put up, they, we can put a...
We mean their property.
Well, we can, the borough can go in and put a connection on there, which causes problems with homeowners, so we don't like to do that. But usually, once, if they don't pay by the second quarter, we take them to court, they pay.
You can just...
Bill Hughton, what is Limestone Ridge with their number of units paying?
784,000.
For?
Connection fees.
Per, and how much is that per EDU?
7,000 dollars.
7,000.
Yeah.
Okay, good. Those were the two special projects. In the meantime, I also did the '09 and '10 audits. Unfortunately, I guess they are kind of hot off the press, so I'm not sure that the public got copies at this point. So, I'll hit the highlights. They will be on the webpage in the next day or two. And I think the key is, they were both clean opinions. If you remember the 2011, we refer to that. Hopefully, most of the people in here have, have seen that. I have broken out all of the funds accordingly, and especially in light of the new sewer and open space funds, I have been able to update and get a little more accurate on those funds, since they had not been done previously. So, I think the main thing is that we did clean opinions on them, they probably have the same comments. There was a comment letter, but it's going to be the identical thing to 2011, since '09 and '10 both had the same type of comments. The update on the fund balance for the general fund was, for the year ended '09, the ending general fund balance was about 8.7 million, and the, the ending fund balance in general fund for 2010 is about the same, so 8.7 million in your general fund. I don't know that there was anything highly unusual about the years. The general fund had revenues of about 3.1 million, and 3 million respectively, and expenses of 2.5 million in '09 and 2.9 million in 2010. So, I think that the biggest difference in 2010 was the sewer fund needed an infusion, and I believe it was Avelo, perhaps? Was the big one there. There was a couple going on as a common. So, I don't know if there's anything special about it. I did bring in the EDUs that we just talked about, they were actually purchased over those couple of years, '09 and '10.
And Tim, aren't you going to be changing '11?
'11 will require the fee in lieu, it was in general fund, and it will be switched over, so the totals will still be the same. I will make those corrections. In fact, I've already done that, I just hadn't gotten you the final copy yet. But, you know, suffice it to say, it'll be about the same as what we have here. And we may then want to talk a little bit about how much of the Victoria Gardens should remain or not, you know, that kind of stuff, so we'll see how it goes.
Well, and maybe, since Joe brought up the real estate portion of open space, if it came out?
Yeah, I have it on my notes here also, so we'll take care of those couple issues. But, yes, it was a fund balance more than it was anything else, and like I say, the EDU on the sewer fund, I don't believe we're showing on the original one, I just didn't know about it until we started studying, so... But that'll be reissued. It was already issued back in June, and it'd be before the end of the year this year, so I think I'll just reissue. It'll have a new date on the opinions, all, and we'll put it up on the website as a replacement, so I'll let you know when that should happen. Again, I don't know if there was anything that stuck out, again, other than the fund amount. So, when they come up as there are questions, I can run those by the township people at first, and certainly, feel free to call me if there is something specific on the audit piece.
Free of charge?
I can. It has been so far. You've been kind, I, I have been referring, referring people back, so we'll see how it goes so far.
I have a question, Tim. There was an allegation some time ago about a missing 2 million dollars. Do you have any way to trace that? Did you find it effective?
Well, if that was part of this report, pretty much this is to be disregarded altogether. There was never any missing funds. I saw 6 billion in...
I just wanted to make sure that's...
Somebody handed this to me on the way out the door last time I was in June, so...
We compiled it, county township oversight, we compiled it from the figures that we were given by the township. Alan Falkoff presented the land trust with a balance of 6 million dollars in 2007, which you say is incorrect.
Yeah, well, there was never anything in the minutes as far as ordinance, official action, any minute, meeting minutes, that said, "We are going to separate 6 million dollars out of the general fund and start in the open space fund"?
Don't know.
Never, never any evidence of that?
That's the numbers he gave us.
I'm sorry?
That's the numbers that Mr. Falkoff gave us.
Yeah, and, you know, and I don't want to digress, but a lot of the numbers that were on that summary simply weren't complete and weren't accurate, as I looked back through. Like I said, I don't want to get into the numbers, but there was, I think, an entire year missed off of the earned income tax on here, and the Victoria Gardens was nowhere near 690 in here, so if you add all the Victoria Gardens. But, I stopped, you know, it would just, didn't tie in with any of the official numbers on the records as I went back through in detail, so...
Tim, thank you very much.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
One more question. Does your audit differ significantly from the famous Ed Johnson audit?
Well, I think I've done a little better job in detailing the different funds.
I thought so.
But the total dollar amounts are still pretty much the same. You know, cash is cash, it's a cash basis, so there was never anything missing. It's just how was it allocated among the sewer funds and the open space funds, so, yeah, I don't, I don't think there was ever anything missing. I never came across anything, and I didn't really study, again, those older reports when I started doing my work, but I'm sure I have the same cash balance as you.
Tom? Yeah, Bob Winstone? Just a point of clarification, when CPAs audit something, they audit what management has prepared. So, what management prepared in these other years and presented to Ed Johnson are no different than what management prepares and handed to Tim. The problem is, Ed Johnson, not what management handed them, nor what obviously Tim was reporting on. So, the CPA does not make entries into the books of any entity. They audit what is given to them by management. Just a point of clarification, right?
Thank you, Bob.
Yes, I just wanted to know, Strombrough, approximately how long did it take you to prepare your report, all those, of your findings on the 2009 and 2010 audits?
Well, I would probably say a week. I don't know that I kept, you know, excellent time record of breaking it down, so it was a week, a week coming up with those, and I had another couple of days on the open space itself and the sewer fund each. So, it's, you know, two weeks, a three-week process.
As a follow-up, there was a couple months delay in this preparation of this, this presentation. Is there a reason why, we kept getting pushed back?
Well, I think, number one, there's only a monthly meeting now, so, and I always want to meet with the board, which I did before I present at a public meeting, so we've got to arrange all those schedules. I think I was physically done with this a while ago. I, you know, month in and a month out.
But we didn't have the latest, because the supervisors then asked him to do the open space and sewer audit, and he didn't want to release the other audits until he had that done.
Yeah, I wanted to do everything at once, you know, obviously with all this stuff that came up anyway. I did end up changing the '09 and '10 for the EDUs and the fee in lieu as well, so just as well. Yeah, you're right, Doug. I think Lisa was asking for, "Where's my bill for the '09 and '10?", I said, "Hold off until I can do the detailed work on the open space", and so, yeah.
Tim, I wanted to ask you, did you get full cooperation in doing this audit from the township, when they were gathering the records, missing things, bad reconciliations or anything of that nature?
No.
You want to share with us?
100% cooperation with Lisa and her staff, and I think I still call Megan Danielle, but I apologize for that. Anyway, no, 100% cooperation, everything.
One last question. So, was there any malfeasance, mismanagement, inappropriate, make sure, so you ordered in '09, '10, '11? And so, in that being, what was, what is your conclusion?
Conclusion is, as it, I always tell people, I gave them a clean opinion, so there was no malfeasance, and that's part of each audit report. It's on my letterhead, if you remember the 2011, which will be on the website as well. But, you know, I did have some management comments, tighten up, you know, do some other control features, but there was nothing in the testing that came up that said, "Oh, this check was made out of cash, and it should have been to ABC Company." You know, that type of thing, was never anything like that.
And I have to thank Tim, because Tim has helped us tremendously, he had helped change a lot of things that, you know, just to do that, you know, do them in a different way, and he's just been extremely helpful to us.
We know where we can find him.
Yeah, I'm available. Yeah, I'm available. Okay, thank you.
Tim, one question. You say everything's hunky-dory. This is.
I wanted to let you know that I put a packet, which I know some of you have already seen, on the website. I thought I would try doing that every month. It has everything as on the agenda, from the beginning to end, all the backup. So that if you want more information as to what an item is on the agenda, you can download the supplemental packet, and it has everything in there. So now, to the extent that I could put it in there, of course, I, you know, a couple things were added last minute. I couldn't add in, but if you look at the packet first here, the minutes, and then you have all the ordinances, and I tried to do it in order of the agenda for everybody. The supervisors and I have been working on the budget. We started a couple weeks ago. We're going to work on it again November 8. I'm going to do a financial presentation of the first nine months of the year next month at the supervisors' meeting. Two months ago, we presented supervisors with the nuisance ordinance, and there was a lot of discussion on changes that need to be made to the nuisance ordinance, so that the definitions were more defined as to what a nuisance is. So they tabled the ordinance. Our planning commission and our hearing officer are working on it. They're going to come up with a list of all the definitions that are in the nuisance ordinance, and if they're not, if they're referred to in another ordinance, they're going to have that on there, and hopefully better define the nuisance ordinance. Bill, you asked last month what the rate to no cost to date had been?
Yes, I did.
And it's $37,730.
We spent $37,000.
Right.
Yes.
To prevent financial, they are going to Scudder Stevens, is that correct?
No, according to private information.
I was asking her.
No, it's the private information I can't read. It's not the financial that I can't read.
Is there more to be spent?
I have no idea.
Depends on the status of the lawsuit.
I don't know.
Where does that stand?
Scudder's expert is working on an agreement that they are going to present to the other two supervisors of how to resolve it.
Sounds like a lot of money.
It is.
Thirty-seven thousand dollars to prevent. It seems like that situation could have been cut off many, many months ago.
I think you're quite right.
Many months ago.
All the, every item was resolved between Scudder's request, except this one issue, and they were resolved rather expeditiously.
The lawsuit, if it goes one way or the other, could mean what? What could be the outcome of a lawsuit?
I can't really answer your question, Bill. If it went one way, we might have to divulge information that is legally not allowed to be resolved, and that would thus probably result in another appeal. If it's resolved another way, the issue is dead.
And the money's gone?
Oh, yes, money's gone.
So you do anticipate more legal fees that the township will pay?
I think there's a chance that that will happen. If I were to wait the court's decision on this, I'm optimistic, and the appeal would be sustained, and that would put an end to it.
This protection of employees' data, that restriction, how long has that been in effect?
It's the law. I can't give out, I can't give out social security numbers, health information, tax data. I can't give that out.
Period, yeah.
Yeah. It's been the law for quite a long time, as far as I know.
I can't do that.
Nobody's business.
Is that precisely what the lawsuit's all about, that personnel?
I mean, if, you can't give out anybody's social security number.
We cannot redact that information from the TurboTax.
Quick, quick.
Quick book, sorry. We cannot redact it on the disk. We have offered to print the whole disk out and redact those that we are not allowed to give out, but that's not acceptable.
That information is only available to whom?
Lisa.
Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead. Continue, Lisa.
There's no work session for the supervisors next Tuesday due to the election.
Is there a planning commission meeting that evening?
No, it's for following. The supervisors are meeting with the LCAC this week to discuss the open space policy and procedures. The supervisors have road inspection tomorrow, and the supervisors are meeting with the Southern Chester County Chamber of Commerce Community and Government Relations Committee tomorrow at 11:00 to discuss the Route 1 corridor, including the Waving A area.
Could you buy interest in that to come? Will he be in this room?
Hi, can I have one? John Larmour goes in the hospital to have a hip replaced on Thursday. When did you schedule the meeting?
I didn't schedule the meeting. From what I understand, he's actually with the supervisors.
It's you, it's with you on Wednesday.
I'm sorry?
The LCAC means on Wednesday with you and the committee.
I didn't get the words.
You're a pro of the last name.
We're not going to take it from the hospital.
Going to give an abbreviated safety report. There were 13 accidents in August. In September, the police issued 68 traffic citations for speeding. It should be noted that residents are not exempt from speeding tickets. And I want to remind people again that please lock your car in the driveway. Threats are continuing. We think it's a gang of juveniles, but we've no word on that. Somebody saw something suspicious, but didn't get to us in time to report it. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. We'll go to old business. First item is an item that Scudder asked to be put on the old business. The status of the oversight committee is that we, the Board of Supervisors, is waiting for the committee's proposal to us. Can you take the Limestone Ridge CEO, Ross Unruh?
There was a conditional use hearing for Limestone Ridge, and there were questions on whether or not the conditional use hearing was handled properly. The supervisors agreed to hire an independent counsel to evaluate the conditional use, and we got the result of that. Ross Unruh did the independent study of it, and not say if I bring it up tonight to discuss it.
Did you just want to summarize what it says?
Yes. Well, his first, the first thing he looked at, he wanted to know if the code was violated that said that the board or the hearing officer shall not communicate directly or indirectly with any party or his representatives in connection with any issue involved, except upon notice and opportunity for all parties to participate, shall not take notice of any communication, report staff memorandum, or any other materials, except advice from its solicitors, unless all parties are afforded the opportunity to attend. So Ross Unruh said that neither the Board of Supervisors nor anyone acting on the board's behalf met with the applicant between August 15, 2011, and November 21, 2011. And he's stating that November 21 was the first hearing. And then he says, "With respect to the meetings on October 24 and November 10, 2011, with the Board of Supervisors, Board Solicitor, and Township Engineer, the Board of Supervisors is not required to enter into a conditional use hearing in advance. It's normal practice for a board to receive Township Engineer review letters and planning commission meeting minutes, and the applicant response is in advance of the hearing." And then he says, "The only private meeting with the applicant's representatives was November 18, between the Township Engineer and the applicant's engineer, for the purpose of determining the site distance. The result of the meeting, of that meeting, was presented during the public hearings." And then he says, "Although the hearing was technically commenced on August 15, all that occurred was an announcement that the hearing was continued until November 21. Parties were not identified, and no testimony was presented. Therefore, the hearing really did not get underway until November 21." The next one was, "Was the township solicitor a hearing officer?" It says that the MPC, the Municipalities Planning Code, authorizes the appointment of a board member or independent attorney as a hearing officer in lieu of the board sitting and hearing the case. However, the record did not reveal that the board solicitor was appointed as a hearing officer. The last one was, "Is the Township Engineer required to report back to and discuss with the Planning Commission a modification or change of recommendation to the Board of Supervisors on an application? The conditional use application process is fluid. The Municipal Planning Code concedes that the applicant will make revisions to the plan in response to the Planning Commission comments and staff and consultant review letters. During this process, it's not unusual for an township engineer to change or modify a recommendation. There is no requirement for a township engineer to report back to the Planning Commission when changing or modifying a recommendation."
Well, thank you. I appreciate you presenting publicly. I just wanted people to hear what the opinion was. I obviously disagree with a lot of that, but I'm not an attorney, and I'm not going to tie you down with a long agenda in discussing the fine points of it. I did want to comment briefly on what I think the implications of this are, at least to me as a planning commissioner and as a resident, if I have a moment. When I went to the class for planning commissioners, I discussed what the process for preparing for a conditional use hearing was, and to summarize, it was that the planning commission, the engineers, have an open, public forum to work out a series of recommended conditions that are based on studies, plan submissions, other factual data that's put forth. This effectively becomes a township's case, and once the planning commission makes that recommendation, the expectation is that the engineer will present that case. What happened in this particular case, and that's pretty much as I've read the ordinance to support that process. I've been on the planning commission 10 years, probably been involved in a dozen conditional use hearings. It's always the way it has worked that I've seen. In this particular case, as I've pointed out before, on July 29, 2011, we got a letter from the engineer with a set of recommended conditions. The planning commission voted on them in our August meeting. By the time we got to the hearing and the decision, the engineer's testimony no longer directly supported the recommended conditions. I cannot find a memorandum, a letter, minutes of any meeting, to document how that change opinions took place. The opinion regained from Mr. Unruh, and supported by Mr. Adams' earlier letter, is that this is acceptable. It's in keeping in practice with the Municipalities Planning Code and the township ordinance. As I said, I can't, I don't have the legal credentials to dispute that. But if this is the case, then the planning commission and the public can take part in the planning commission process. In my opinion, have to treat the township consultants and staff as adversaries in the conditional use process, because we cannot rely on the engineer to present the case that is presented by the planning commission. That means that in the future, for conditional use processes, and I don't, hearings, I won't, I can't speak to the other planning commissioners, but I will be recommending the planning commission get its own attorney, ask for party status, and if necessary, enjoin its own consultants to back up the conditions that it eventually arrives at in the public process.
I believe the PC did have public, did have status.
We did have status. We did not, however, prepare to have an attorney and have another engineer set up for it. You're right, Bob. That's absolutely correct. We did have status, and just in the future, I think we need to do that, because the result of this was that the planning commission and the residents who participated in that process. And I personally got a number of people to come to planning commission meetings and participate in that process, and told them, "This is the way you affect change", and I feel like I let those people down, because they were at a distinct disadvantage when the conditional use hearing began, and the case that they had participated in and prepared for was not presented in the event.
And thank you. I know you work very hard on the planning commission, and your voice is heard. So thank you very kindly. New business. Lisa, would you, I should, start talking things about the soliciting ordinance and act.
As I've discussed in the past few months, the soliciting ordinance had to be revised, because we could no longer prohibit all soliciting in the township. The supervisors have revised the ordinance for soliciting. It now requires that a solicitor must come to the township office. They have to file an application. They have to have a soliciting license from the state. They have to pay a $35 fee. Chief McCarthy and our zoning officer review the application. Chief McCarthy does a background check, and then if everything's okay, they get issued a soliciting card for 30 days. This ordinance has been on the website. As I said before, if you live on a private road, you can put no soliciting at the entrance to your private road, and if they violate that, they can be prosecuted. If you don't live on a private road, you can put no soliciting at the entrance to your driveway or at your door, and they are not permitted soliciting. Do they have any questions on the ordinance?
Is there any exception? We're coming into the political, you know, get out the vote drive, so I would expect both the Democrat and Republican parties in the township to be doing door-to-door information. Is that considered soliciting, or just distribution of information?
It's exempt.
Yes.
It's exempt.
Charitable parties, religious, school, political, and civic organizations are exempt.
Thank you.
There must be soliciting contributions in that regard, or they're exempted.
Okay, thank you. And if they don't have a license, they're violating the law.
To that point, Lisa, then, if I, who head up the Church of More Income for Bill LaVlaugn, want to solicit, I have to have a license to prove what my bylaws say, or how do, would you accept any religion, or how does that work?
Albert, you might be able to speak to that.
The ordinary generals ought to start with. There's a whole series of things that they don't consider charitable or religious, you know. We know the Church of Christ Temple is down on Burke Street. That's pretty obvious. But if it's something like.
Something weird?
Yeah, well, that's something we want to look at more carefully.
And you will make that determination?
Yes, I will. They have to apply. It's why they have to apply, to give me an opportunity to do those backgrounds.
Good.
They also have to produce a photo ID, date of birth, social security number. There's a whole series of things they have to produce.
But if they're religious, if it's a religious party, they don't have to?
No, correct.
But what ID do they have to have if they're a religious party on them, even though they don't have to have a license?
We've recommended they have an ID, but nothing in the state law that, or the court case that required that said that. In fact, the IDs that we have, we already reviewed and have to change, because, you know, we want something big that they got to wear around their neck, which you don't have. It's just that way we were doing.
I did have one question. These applications that you might get from people who are trying to solicit, will they be considered confidential within the township, or is that something that any citizen could then come in and look at the file?
No, not with their social security number.
I was going to say.
Chief McCarthy will hold that information.
Depends on where information, if it's public information you can get off the internet, we're not normally called that.
Yeah.
But other. But other information, we're not gonna provide. Thank you.
I move, we approve ordinance 205.
I second the motion. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Okay. Next one.
The township has been working on sewer extension from Schoolhouse, or actually from Meadowview Lane up near the Kennet High School. And it will be extended down to Five Points at the intersection of Hillendale and Old Kennet and Kalem Road. The other extension will be from the new pump station on Creek Road. And it will, the extension will continue down Creek Road to McFarland Road to address all the failing systems on Creek Road. Everybody will be required to connect and they will have to pay a detachment fee to connect. Same with Five Points. Our sewer engineer, URS, has been working on this for a long time. And the planning commission, and right now it's just in the planning stage. The planning commission recommended the stud, the special study for approval by the supervisors. And at this point, the supervisors have to approve a resolution that they agree with the study, just so they can move forward with the next part of planning for the study and submit this to DEP. Because each stage has to be approved by DEP before they can move on to working on the next stage.
Here's a number.
Is there any questions?
Okay. Takes one to a year, yes.
Uh, I have a question. It's not quite the sewer. It's the other part. This CWA line they're running currently?
The gas line?
The gas, the Pico gas line?
Yeah.
Okay, gas? I thought it was water.
Right, right here.
Yeah, right. Oh, it's gas.
Gas. That's for gas.
And where, where are they running it?
It's going, um-
From the back entrance of Fire Estates to Alonso and Morrison's Mushroom House. And it's way along the line.
Coming in.
Tapped in, too.
Coming in this way from the pipe.
That's correct.
To the facilities. Okay, thank you.
I think Morrison and Alonso are the main ones paying for that.
Yeah. But the other people can tap in if they want.
Right.
People if they want to do it, yeah.
So this project for the sewer will be completed by the end of next year. The sewer extensions. And then everybody up at that one will start connecting.
We need a number to vote on. Resolution, we don't have that here.
It's 2012-15.
I move, we approve, resolution 2012-15. Second. Any questions or comments?
Just a quick one.
Yes?
For our listener, the planning commission. The planning commission set off to recommend further studies, but they wanted to put this to bed, this piece of it. So there's, there's gonna be further engineering review of other failing areas, but not to hold this up because of the status of these.
That's correct. It's actually part of the whole township.
Yeah. They're gonna go door-to-door in the Mendenhall area along 52. And they're gonna go door-to-door in the Southend Lair and along Hillendale Road.
Hey. Do we have the stop sign ordinance?
Um, supervisors have, last month they accepted dedication from two developments. Tonight they're gonna accept dedication from another development. Last month it was Carlton and Penfield. Tonight it will be Quintera, which is on Hillendale Road. In addition to that, we have to pass an ordinance to put up stop signs at the end of these roads. So this ordinance is to put a stop sign on Hidden Pond Drive, which is in Quintera. Carlton Drive, Pulling Drive, and Mark Drive, they're all in Carlton. And Penfield Drive, which is Penfield subdivision on Kalem Road.
Anyone have any questions? I move, we accept ordinance number 206.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Moving right along. Lisa?
Um, I have motions for transfers. And these were decided by all three supervisors. As a res, and what I said is as a result of the open space and sewer audit, they're going to make the following transfers. 1.4 million 838 will go from the open space fund to repay the general fund. Next, they will transfer 1.4 million 838 from the general fund back to the open space fund, allocating that money as open space money. Now, that, that money will have to be in, in with the fee in lieu because even though it was originally open space tax money, I'm now transferring money back and I can only put open space money in the open space bank account. So it'll still be in the open space fund. It has to be separate. But they're allocating it as open space money. They will transfer 185,006.22 from the general fund to the open space fund for the fee in lieu fees that have been collected over the years. And then the general fund had loaned the sewer fund 318,0571, which is on the sewer reconciliation. And then that will be paid back over time.
Anyone have any questions? No, did not the, um, move to approve this? Motion to transfer? I make that motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Here's, button center.
Um, as, as I discussed a couple months ago, Tim Umbry recommended that there be limits put on sick comp and vacation time carryovers for personnel. And that we create cell phone policy, which the supervisors did all of that. So we now have to make a motion to approve those changes as Tim recommended.
Could you repeat those again?
Tim recommended that the supervisors put limits on sick time, comp time, and vacation time carryover. And that supervisors create a cell phone policy, which they did. Be determined who can have a cell phone and if they don't want a township cell phone or be on the township plan, what they reimburse them monthly.
I move, we approve those policy changes.
Sorry, what? So for the carryover policy, can you just briefly outline what that is? Is it unlimited carryover?
That's the point.
No, that's-
She was up to now, but she needs to-
It was detailed in our July and August meetings.
Okay, I'll take that. That's fine.
I have it right here.
Go ahead.
I have it here. Now, it's changed that an employee can only carry over 10 days of comp time. They can only, um, let's see.
Vacation.
Two weeks of vacation. And five days of sick time. And the cell phone policy was that supervisors and myself and the road crew are allowed cell phones. I don't take a cell phone, nor do I take the reimbursement. But if an employee doesn't take the cell phone, they can be reimbursed $30 a month.
Thanks.
When you talk about employees, you're not talking about the supervisors.
She said the supervisors.
No, no, the supervisors don't get the reimbursement.
No, they only get the cell phone option, yes or no?
Right.
I guess the question stems to, um, some issues that occurred several years ago where insurance was being paid to those who weren't taking the employee insurance. Are there any employees today that are being paid essentially cash for either not using the employee insurance or they're under some other policy?
All employees are on township policy.
All employees are on township policy. Thank you. I move, we approve the changes. That's right, Dan.
Yes, all right. I second it. All in favor? Aye. Okay. Last but not least.
You got a campus thing or something? I brought up. Can you just catch your point?
Um, there is nine members on the caper board. And the ninth member has to be alternately appointed by the township or the borough. So we have Marv McGreevy, who is on the, on the ca, on caper, but he needs to be officially appointed by the township as a board member. He, he lives in, um, Kennet Square.
I move that we appoint him to the caper board.
Second.
All in favor?
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Row report from September 17 to October 15. Flowing of township roads and final trimming was completed this month. The equipment is starting to be ready for upcoming winters. Storm damage on September 18 brought down high-power lines at McFarland and East Baltimore Pike. Our crew, along with fire company from Kennet and police, our police force, had to close the, and secure the area due to the live wires on the ground. And it was some two hours later that Pico arrived and fixed it. Our salt bid for co-op, salt was bid and will be awarded tonight. And we'll get more about that in a moment. Last year's winter left us with plenty of material on hand, but we still need to bid to make sure supply is available when we want. Pico started their high-pressure gas main extension from Norway to Woodward, Woodview, exactly the other way around. It's coming from Woodward Drive down to Rosedale. We talked about that a moment ago. Inlet repairs were done on several different locations around the township. Victoria Gardens has its final road coat. Township worked with the contractor on raising sewer manholes during this paving. Also, Quintera subdivision had its final cop coat put on. After the Quintera and the Victoria Gardens, after the Quintera dedication of the road, Kennet Township will own about 56 miles of roads, which we will be responsible for maintaining. That didn't mean complete that last one. Okay, we now have the co-op bid. Do you want to take that?
No question.
Back to that intersection of McFarland and Rosedale, where it had been mentioned in the past, that house that sits on the corner, it would be on my left-hand side if I'm going south. McFarland has big bushes. And you really have to creep out, almost put your front end in the intersection to see if somebody's coming down that road. Granted, the, the stoplights before we stop, I think it's working fine. But I, I still feel uncomfortable having to inch out into the roadway so I could see around those bushes. And I thought there was an agreement with the board that, that we'd work with the owner to try to cut those bushes down or lower them or do something.
You might be handled that.
We can't, the whole reason for the four-way stop was, we can't cut them out of what is the site distance. Now, I agree with the wet weather today, they're hanging over a little bit. But we were at our legal limit for that site distance there. By the way, site distances are-
So you can't, you can't ask them for some-
Well, we asked them a couple times, but we got it. We asked them, and we'll ask them again, but we didn't get a, okay, real positive response.
Bob, what's been the accident experience at that intersection?
None. That's good.
Yeah. I'd love to make, like to know that.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a bid for rock salt. And this has come through the Municipal Cooperative of Southern Chester County, and they accepted the bids for rock salt for the winter 2012, 2013. The purchasing committee of the co-op made a recommendation as to the lowest acceptable bidder, and the following bid was recommended for acceptance. And we were, are going to take 200 tons of rock salt at $53.01 delivered to the garage for a total of $10,602.
I move, we approve that purchase.
I second it. All those in favor? Aye.
Any questions on the bid?
I didn't ask, sorry, I didn't ask. Is Quintera road dedication, Lisa, do you want to take that also?
Yes. The, as I stated, the Quintera subdivision is ready to dedicate their roads. I have a resolution 2012-13. It's to dedicate the road beds of Hidden Pond Drive and portions of Hillendale Greenwood Roads to the township. They have put up a 18-month maintenance bond for $114,000 for the roads, in case there's any problems over that time period. Does anybody have any questions on the road dedication?
I move, we accept the, this is with the resolution 2012-13. I move. All those in favor? Aye. Okay. Um, can you just-
The case property, uh, two, this was last month, we presented the preliminary approval of the case property. It's located on Old Kennet and Bayard Road. And it has an entrance on Star Gut. It's creating three new lots. The property's in the R1 zoning district, and it contains 41 acres total of the entire parcel. The applicant is proposing to create three new lots for a total of four lots. One lot will be containing the original house, barn, and structures. The final plans were recommended for approval by the planning commission on October 2nd with conditions. I asked the board supervisors to approve the final plans dated 4/2012, last revised September 18, '12. Contain two sheets and the 29 requested waivers that supervisors previously approved. The applicant must receive Chester County Health Department and DEP approval prior to getting signed plans. Address any outstanding issues in the Gilmore associate's letter dated August 28, 2012, which they have done. Address any issues with Ann Walters, which they have done. And they will place a note on the plan stating that if, in the future, any construction or subdivision is proposed for any lot shown, the plan shall be submitted to Kennet Township for their review and approval. The applicant must sign the rules and regulations for site development. And lastly, the applicant must pay the fee in lieu fee of $27,000, which is based on $9,000 per unit, or negotiate an easement with the board of supervisors, which they are currently discussing with the board of supervisors.
I move, we accept that?
Second.
All those, any comments? All those in favor? Aye. I'm moving right along. Okay, Lisa?
Actually, Bob.
Okay, excellent.
We have three escrow releases. Carlton South, escrow release number 10, the amount of $103,215.38, leaving us a balance of $32,032.42 for Carlton South. I'll do them all as a batch again. Carlton North, release number 10, for $78,473.57, leaving $12,899.898.42 in the balance, escrow balance.
Wait, that was on the north?
That was for the north, yeah.
Um, one more. In the second paragraph, $78,000 remain for escrow release, on this escrow release request. Sorry, go ahead. Hold that. What was left?
We'll do the third one, yes. October 15, letter about Quintera, release $358,772.87, which will flows out to Quintera, escrow cap, which is release number 6 for Quintera. I move, we approve all three of those escrow releases.
Any questions or comments? Do you want to move the issue? Aye.
Second. We have two requests for extensions. T.I. project until December 18th this year. And the Limestone Ridge, now known as Granite Ridge, until October, no, until, until November 22nd this year. Move, we approve those two extensions.
I second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That brings us to the end of a busy section.
I'm sorry, I thought you were in public comment.
I am.
Good, okay.
I am.
I just wanted to know, wanting to know if there's any further update on the Penns Manor situation. Are, are you satisfied with the developers- Are you satisfied with the developers' back working? You're not?
Our attorney just sent the bank a letter requesting some money for another credit. And even though the developer says they're working out there, we don't think that they are. So we're proceeding with taking the letter of credit, and the township will have to, if we're successful in getting it by the winter, we'll have to plow this year and finish all that stuff. But I- I've asked the supervisor to favor the, consider having an outside company plow those roads this year. Because we have to have special plows for those roads. And I don't know exactly what those plows are, but there's some-
It's narrow.
Yeah, some sort of plow, so, and there's work to be done around the manholes in order to plow before you can plow in there.
But the top coat has not been put on, right?
No.
And the manhole covers are setting up.
So we have to have, there's some sort of plow that will go over these manholes?
Yeah.
So the supervisor hasn't answered that yet, but that was, the roadmaster asking if that could be done.
Where are- where is Penns Manor, where are the developer, on the money? Do you have sufficient escrow if you need to finish?
Well, we believe we have sufficient escrow.
Of course.
Yeah, and they have leased it every year.
But you control that bank account.
Yes, but, yeah. We do. But they, our attorney sent a letter for request, to request that.
Yeah, so the- the earlier discussion on their own business around the Limestone Ridge conditional use application, I'm sorry if I missed it in previous meetings, but this is kind of news to me and I've been sitting here thinking about it. If I understand correctly, our head of the Planning Commission felt blindsided by the process?
No, the head of the Planning Commission wasn't, he didn't, I don't want to speak for him, but he's not here. He, uh, Matt was a member of the Planning Commission.
Okay, so the member of the Planning Commission felt that the Planning Commission was blindsided at the hearing?
Yes.
And his, the intention is, or his stated intention is, to try to secure counsel for future applications so that our Planning Commission is not blindsided again. I- I am concerned about the adversarial relationship that that establishes between the supervisors and the Planning Commission, and I question why we would want to put ourselves in a position to establish such a relationship with our own Planning Commission and incur further fees. And I wonder if the supervisors would be willing to give their assurance that in future, they would not blindside the Planning Commission or- or try to, you know, do anything to put up a perception that the Planning Commission is being blindsided.
The supervisors weren't involved in that process. They didn't blindside the Planning Commission. What happened is, the township engineer had some meetings with the applicant's engineer to discuss different parts of it, which I wasn't even aware of.
Okay, so-
So that's what he was questioning.
Okay, so do we have something then? Can the township supervisor put something in place so that that doesn't happen again? Can they put in some guidelines or guidance or requirements?
I- I asked during the last process, and I think, um, that there shouldn't be any meetings, whether it's legal or not, unless you know, because the problem is, I need to know about these meetings to keep them in- in the record of what's going on. So it shouldn't happen in future that these meetings-
Yes.
Obviously, the attorneys are saying that they're proper, but it still helps us understand what's going on.
Right.
Quick comment, all those from the Planning Commission? One, um, the Planning Commission has its own budget for such things, so we are allowed to at any time bring on counsel. It has, whether it's conditional use or not.
It's interruptive, Bob, it's up to the limit of your budget.
Right, up to the limit of our budget. If we needed more, we'd have to go to the supervisors for that, and they would use their judgment on that, and we would abide by it. I also, I'll stand alone on this as representing myself. I can't speak for the PC members. I would not take it as a hostile relationship whatsoever if we chose to have our own attorney look at it. It would just because we'd want to have a better party status, I think, remind me what Matt was stating. He wasn't stating it, in my opinion, but, again, in my opinion, to create a hostile relationship with the supervisors. So I would, I would personally object to that characterization of it, and kind of change it a little bit, but back in limestone. It's my understanding that limestone will be responsible for their own interior roads and maintenance, and they have submitted a, you know, an agreement towards that that was under review for consideration as part of the approval process that we're in the middle of going through. So what we hear about from Penns Manor will not apply to Granite Ridge.
So, so that's great. And anything I think that we can do to prevent spending taxpayers' money on lawyers' fees as opposed to putting in place something to, you know, revise our procedures or our policies or our expectations of the individuals that work for us, as Lisa said, to set the expectation, or the requirement even, that this doesn't happen again, would be the preferred way rather than, you know, having the Planning Commission paying for lawyers to make sure that nothing-
Totally agree with unnecessary spending of money. But I was going to give the Township credit for the fact that Matt asked for an independent review, and they provided it. And that was at the discretion of the supervisors to help remedy the appearance in Matt's mind and resident that something went afoul. One thing Lisa did not mention from that letter, which I think is important, and I'm not criticizing if she did not mention it, but one of the things a lawyer brings up, and you might want to even read it so it's clear, is that at the time of November eighteenth, parties were not identified.
Yeah, I said that.
It just, I didn't say that. So there was no way for parties to be notified to be involved, which is why they came up with a policy, we'd like to know what's going on. But even if they did know, no one had, from the township's perspective, the ability to contact parties other than maybe local residents, that would be obvious, but, you know. So it was a little, a little, not to say, it's actually hard to deal with, but, you know.
And I, and I agree with Lisa, you know, the fact that it meets the letter of the law is not the point here. It's pointing to-
But those are good reasons and good concerns, bringing them up.
Or, to that point, the Planning Commission works in three-person teams so that, you know, Matt or any other person brings their opinion to their group, and then the group decides and presents it, I guess, to the chairman. So there is more of a balance in how they would approach any situation. But I think, I'm guessing that the entire three-person team would have the opinion that, you know, that they weren't involved in things that happened that were going on. And it's that concern about that that drives them. People are trying to, we're trying to get this done, I think. I'm sitting on the outside, I'm just a resident with respect to the man on the Planning Commission. People are trying to get this done, and so people want to keep things moving, but the loop of communication doesn't seem to be included in all, in the steps that here, all the parties involved. It's either that way. But to your exact point, if this is a mistake, if we learn from it, and we're all very positive about that idea, and don't make the mistake again, then that's what, that's the best thing for the township. If it's even a mistake legally not.
Good, thank you for the discussion. Appreciate that.
Phil, wait a minute. Behind you.
Oh, Lisa, did I miss it, or did you say on the capa appointment? That's an, an, an ex, an ex, a term that only runs until February of two thousand thirteen.
Yes, you're correct.
I didn't know what you, I missed it or what you said. This term ends at January, so it is.
Right.
Phil, you had a question?
I always give way to Eva.
Your wife.
I didn't hear what she said.
I have the same problem. I wanted to comment on something that, first of all, is there any change in the status or the activities of John Gatt, our consultant that we've signed a contract?
He and I had a meeting, an appointment, to see a potential candidate, and the candidate did not show. And that's, everything so far has been done with John Gatt.
Okay. I want to, I want to call your attention to an article that appeared in the Chester County Press this past week, and it was written by Mr. Gaw, who was here tonight for our meeting. New Garden has now over a thousand acres under easement now. And they have, and we've talked about this in the past many times, but I'd like you to consider some of the things that other townships do, particularly New Garden, where they have an open space review board. It's headed by a Bernie McKay, and it's, I liken it very much to our LCAC. The point is that they do all the work, put all the things together, and come before the board for their approval of the money and the necessary legal issues. They don't, development does not come into the Board of Supervisors. It comes to the open space review board, and a lot of townships in this general area do that. So I'm going to give a copy of this article, in case you haven't seen it, to Lisa for your consideration.
And just so you know, I agree with you that that's how it should be handled. And I agree that there's different changes that should be made on the policy. And the most recent one that came in, I referred them directly to the LCAC, not to the board at all, which is the Case property.
There's Dylan Office, too.
But they are working with LCAC right now.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions, comments, clues?
I would just like to add along here to what Phil was saying. You see not only this article in the local paper, but in the Inquirer, there was a big article about trails. Everywhere you go, cities, towns, boroughs, are really promoting and creating trails for the public good. They're putting in trails, but here in Kennet, we're not. I think we really need to examine this a little more closely. There are great benefits to it, and with this preservation, you know, perhaps instead of isolated patches, we can get a preservation plan in place.
For trails, or you mean just the preservation?
Preservation of trails. And the connectivity is important for preservation. I mean, that's where it's all at, rather than having isolated small plots. And we paid, I don't know, a hundred thousand for all these maps over the years?
We didn't give you-
Okay, well, it was a lot, I know. I worked on it when I was at the EAC. I think we ought to take better advantage of them, and really go for the connectivity thing on open space preservation, and improve the process, as Bill said. As you read this article, you'll find that that open space review board in New Garden also has their eye on priority, trail systems, looking at the trail systems where they need connectivity and going after those properties. They just acquired something like eleven or twelve acres, which they, I think they paid something like a hundred thousand dollars for, a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. But this, this is a single committee that is honchoing all this effort in New Garden, and it's not just going out and searching for places. They're identifying places and prioritizing them. Thank you. I'll give this to you.
Seeing the head is risen, I move we adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.